Raise their hand and ask questions live, subject to the time constraints that are given by the chair. In the past, we've also allowed people to use the Q and A functionality to ask questions that can be read aloud for the group. I'm going to switch back to trying to figure out how to move Cal over. Jason, if you're on, I know I'm a co-host, but I don't know if there's different functionality that I have. If you're able to move him over to the panelist side, I don't know if there's an issue because he's a phone number.
Five from the council.
We're also watching Colin Leary.
So it looks, we don't quite have a quorum yet, I don't believe.
One, two, three.
We should. Oh, I speak, I missed Brooke, so.
We need Cal or Jay.
Well, you, Cal is here, we're just not able to move him over. Oh, someone did it, Jason figured it out, I could not, great. Or someone else did, or Elise did the magic, but Elise, did you do that?
Okay.
Okay.
I have no magic.
Yeah, Cal, did you redial in? It looks like we have you in both places, is that, is that what's happening?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did redial in.
Okay, great.
Leo?
Yes.
I'm in touch with Colin Leary III of our presenters. And I don't see him on the board, but he says that he's on, so are you picking up?
So what's the person's name again? They're probably also, if they signed on through the general link, they're showing up as an attendee and I can try to move them to a panelist.
Okay, his name is Colin Leary.
I see him, okay, let's try and do that.
Thank you.
I guess once you get him moved over, then we can.
Yeah, so Colin should now be moved over.
We have a quorum, correct, Elise, now?
Yes.
Scott, do, shall we call the meeting to order?
Well, there's Colin, I see Colin.
Okay, bye. Yeah, Jay got on.
That was my magic.
Had some technical issues, thank you all.
So I figured out how to lift you up.
Appreciate it, Elise.
Okay, Cindy, you want to go?
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, it's 5:32. And then let's do the pledge of allegiance next, we'll look at the flag behind Scott there. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible. Invisible.
Liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Now I'm going to do the, the roll call, so I'm just going to go down the list, it's probably easier. So Marty, I believe you're there. Marty? Are you on mute?
I'm muted, my, I'm here.
Okay, great, and Dibby, I saw you.
Here.
Abby?
Here.
Wanda? Wanda? We see, I know Scott.
Yeah.
We see Cal.
Here.
Okay, great. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy? And I know Jay's there, so, okay, so we have a quorum. And we'll move forward to the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Kathy motions.
Second.
And that was Scott, and who was the second?
Kathy's motion, Brooke's second.
Oh, Kathy, okay, got it, just a sec here. Okay. Let's go ahead and, all the ayes?
Aye.
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 And it's a no?
Aye.
There's a delay, so sometimes it seems like a.
Getting used to it. Okay, it seems like there's all ayes, I have no nos. Okay, so the, the agenda then is approved. And then also, are there any statements of a conflict of interest from any of the council members? Okay, I'll turn it over to Leo then.
First, I wanted to say, welcome to the first special meeting called by the Coast MAC Land Use and Events Ad Hoc Committee to learn and comment on a permit application for a new inn and spa on the coast in Timber Cove. We expect to adjourn about 7:30. Leo's going to explain how the public can ask questions and comment when their time comes, Leo, please.
Or, so the, the chair will provide, you know, at the right moment on the agenda, a chance for public to comment and ask questions. And they can raise their hand, and I can unmute you so that you're able to ask your question live. If you have called in, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and it's star six to unmute after that. Scott, is there a time limit for the number of minutes people have to ask questions or make comments?
Two minutes, we're asking.
Two minutes, okay, so if I can get the timer set up, I'm using a different setup, but the timer sometimes will show up on the screen when a public member is commenting, so don't be alarmed if there is a change there where it switches to the.
We lost you, Leo.
This is why broadband is so important.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, we're waiting for Leo to come back, I will ask that we hold questions until the presentation is completed. And when Leo comes back, I'll let him jump in and finish up. Elise?
Can I just add one thought? The purpose of a land use committee special meeting is to specifically to gather public comments, so we encourage people to comment, and these comments will be gathered and provided to permit Sonoma as part of the public record for the application period.
Leo, we lost you there, I didn't want to finish your thought.
Yeah, I apologize, my connection's been a little unstable today. Just that people can, again, if, when it's time for the public to speak, you can raise your hand. Using the Zoom app, you can raise your hand if you've dialed in using star nine, and we'll give you two minutes. I will keep track on a timer, and if I'm able to make the timer display on the screen, it may show up because the attendees in the webinar format, their video doesn't show up even if they have that functionality, so if you see anything, it'll be the clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and we have the Q and A functionality, so that's one other option that we can provide you. You can enter a question in Zoom, and it can be answered either live or through other formats if possible.
Okay, as this is a special meeting, we will only be taking up the topic of this permit application, so all questions. Last year, when we were all surprised with the marathon permit application for the coast, we universally felt we should have been included much earlier in the application process. To address this, the Coast MAC, together with District Five staff, have developed this process to bring timely inclusion. Today is the beginning, this is our chance for us as a community to learn about a project directly from the applicant in a venue favoring learning, sharing, and meaningful discussion. We will be measured by how well we hear, we'll be judged by the kindness with which we treat one another. We all love this place, our coast. There was some confusion about the time, the window for comment. And permit Sonoma has initiated a new process, and I'll read an excerpt to that, so that we all kind of are on board. Why the windows seem so short, indeed, it wasn't so, it isn't so short, but we got in early. So from permit Sonoma, permit Sonoma has implemented, implemented a new referral process to engage referral agencies in the completeness process in accordance with Government Code Section 65943, the Permit Streamlining Act. In short, a planner has 30 days from acceptance to deem an application complete or incomplete. An incomplete application status means additional information is needed prior to processing the application. Initial referral sent out with an August 6 date is giving referral agencies an opportunity to comment on absent applications submitted and to indicate the, how their status is with that particular application in their interest. There will be a second referral sent out requesting a more formal review of the application as a whole, giving referral agencies more review time and allowing them time to submit conditions and/or comments in regards to project design. So there is a second window comment, so now that we're all on, on the same page, our next effort. So, to regular calendar items. We are, the presentation of land use permit application. By the way, this applicant requested that the MAC take up their project for this public process. Applicants are Timber Cove Country Inn LLC. The name of the project is Timber Cove Country Inn. Location is 21850 Highway 1, technically Jenner, but in Timber Cove. APN 109070010. There are three presenters, I'd like to introduce, Michael Berry, the owner, Colin Leary, a project manager, and Margaret Graham, another project manager, and local people will know. The project presentation, we estimate to be about 20 minutes, and I hand the floor to Margaret Graham to manage that. Margaret, please.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you to the MAC Board for this opportunity for us to present this project to you, to help us communicate to the community and to receive feedback from the community, and hopefully to make this a better project for all. As Scott mentioned, there will be three presenters here. The first will be Michael Berry, who is the, one of the owners of Timber Cove Country Inn. He's based in New Jersey. We also have our project manager Colin Leary, who works with Michael out in New Jersey, who's also project manager for this, this project. And the third person is obviously myself, and I actually live in Timber Cove. So I've been living here in Timber Cove for the last eight years, I'm a permanent resident here. So I'm going to hand over now to Michael to begin the conversation, and I'm going to attempt to share the screen with, with the presentation so that Michael and Colin and I can speak to this. So bear with me while I try and attempt to make this happen and see how we're looking.
Great, nice, Margaret.
Okay.
Great, yes, thank you, so thanks for the introduction, and thank you all. I have a fly buzzing around me, so if it comes into the screen, you might see me waving a little bit, but, so yes, I'm the, I'm the CEO of Iron State Development and the Chairman of Ironwave Hospitality. Those are two of my, my development company and my management company. Also, the, the principal owner of Timber ID, which is the, the owner of the Timber Cove Hotel and the principal owner of Timber Cove Country Inn LLC, the owner of the proposed project in front of you now. And, you know, obviously Margaret introduced herself and Colin Leary, you'll, you'll hear from shortly as well, both intimately involved in this project and have been for the past couple of years as we've been gathering information and putting together this application. I just wanted to start with a little bit of an introduction as to how I came into your meeting room and, you know, basically my history with the Timber Cove area, which dates back to the end of 2014, so about five years ago, and I'm a developer and part of my development company is hospitality. I do build hotels as well as apartment buildings and commercial office buildings, a number of different projects, different areas around the country, mostly in the northeast, but other projects further afoot. But anyway, I came to the Timber Cove Hotel five years ago or so, recognized the hotel and the area for, you know, the magical place that it is. Timber Cove itself was, you know, truly a special iconic structure, but one that had been neglected for a number of years, for many years. And, and part of the, the plan and the program in purchasing Timber Cove, also with my partner Jens von Gierck, I don't know if some of you have met Jens, he's up there quite often, it was to essentially rehabilitate Timber Cove and bring it back to the luster and the glory. And we spent a lot of time and effort and energy to make certain that we didn't change the character of the iconic structure, but really, the, the task was to bring it up to a modern standard. And, and in doing that, we cleared the violations of past owners, both monetarily and physically, with, I'll say, activities that were unauthorized by the commission and the coastal commission in the, in the county. We brought it up to modern code by completely replacing all the electricity, the plumbing, the fire systems, brought it up to the ADA codes, we installed a permanent generator so that when, when there are times of need, Timber Cove can, does serve as an area of refuge. It's really, you know, in addition to being obviously a hotel and it has an economic purpose, but it's also, we look at it as a community asset. Everybody from the neighborhood is always welcome, welcome for their guests to stay there, welcome to, to obviously eat and stay in the, the great room in the restaurant, and also to be there in times of need, as I say, with hopefully a power, a permanent power source and phone service and what have you in certain, certain times. Hospitality's not an easy business, you know, there, there's a lot that goes into it, and at the end of the day, it's rewarding, and I don't mean that from a financial perspective, I mean, it's really a rewarding labor of love in some respects. We have over 50 employees at the existing Timber Cove, it's the extended Timber Cove family. They live all in the area, and, you know, you're certainly familiar with some of them. So it's, it has a lot, and over the past five years, I've come to know a great many people in the area. I respect the way of life, and obviously, you know, I want to make it clear that I didn't just roll into town and, and, you know, not acclimate and get acquainted with the area. I've been doing that for years now, I'll say. Even though I am from New Jersey, and, you know, please don't hold that against me, but I, I do recognize that, that you folks live in a beautiful, beautiful part of the world. So, you know, kind of changing gears now. The subject at hand is the Timber Cove Country Inn, and when I, when I purchased the original property, the Timber Cove Hotel property, it came with two additional parcels. The parcel that we're discussing today, which is 21850 Highway 1, 12-acre parcel just to the north of the existing hotel, and then a smaller parcel to the east across Highway 1, which, which is not part of this application. So the, the Timber Cove Country Inn is, is kind of, I'll say, the, you know, the, the, the new little sister in the community to Timber Cove, but, you know, basically providing, again, an area where the community has the ability to come, their guests, their friends come and stay, visitors get to also see what a wonderful part of the world the Sonoma coast is and the Timber Cove environs. And we've, we've looked at it from the perspective of being as environmentally conscious as, trying to be as harmonious with the landscape as we possibly can, respecting wetlands, respecting the bluff area, respecting, you know, many of the environmental concerns that everybody is always very interested ourselves, number one in that regard. So in that regard, you know, the architectural and the planning focus has been with that in mind, and we've, we've utilized a great number of resources in the area. Consultants whom I'm sure most of you are familiar with, who have helped us out and have brought years and decades of knowledge from the area to assist us in planning this project. So I'm not going to get into the, the specifics, I'm just going to kind of say the inspiration for the hotel is, you know, combining the comforts of hospitality with, with the elements of nature. And what you see on the, on the page that Margaret has put up are some shots from Timber Cove, but also some kind of aspirational, like to give a feel and a flavor for what we had in mind when we went about this. And then, on the, on the next page, simply, if you could flip to the next page, Margaret.
We asked panelists to mute their screens, please.
There you go. So quite simply, this is a, an aerial photo with the proposed Timber Cove Country Inn superimposed upon it. And we're talking about 12 hotel cottages, 12 hotel suites, if you will. Each an independent structure, small independent structure. A central reception area with a spa and some additional amenities, a soaking tub and sauna that, that go along with it. You'll see, obviously, the, the grouping of the development is on a portion of the site where a great portion of it predominantly to the north remains untouched. And, you know, that was again by design, by trying to disturb as little of the, the site, but still also have small structures that kind of blend as opposed to a single larger structure that might be more, you know, take up less footprint, but might be more of an obstruction. So that, that was the, the thought and the theory behind it. I'm going to turn it over now to Colin and also back to Margaret to speak a little bit more about the specifics. We're all here for the, the Q and A and welcome your questions and hope we can answer your questions tonight. If we can't, certainly we'll, we'll be able to go back, regroup and, and get some information together if there, there are any items that we can't answer off the fly. So thank you again, thanks for giving us this opportunity, and with that, I'll turn it over to Colin.
Can you guys all hear me? All right, great, thank you, Michael. It's great to meet you all in these, in the Zoom world we're in, and excited to present, excited to present this project. Michael hit upon a lot of this, but this has been a, a process that's been going on, been working on for just under two years or so. And what I'll do now is, is give you, really speak to the site plan, and then Margaret will be speaking further about the various consultants that we've been working with. And I think she's going to be speaking a little bit to the architecture and the interior design later on a bit. But I think you're all familiar with the site, Timber Cove Resort is just to our south. We are obviously west of Highway 1 on the 12-acre parcel that Michael mentioned. I think one important thing to note, the picture is, this site does wrap around the front of Timber Cove Resort. The, the last slide, we can keep it here, Margaret, but if, you know, the last slide, which shows the whole site, does demonstrate that the, the site does wrap around, I think to what we refer to as the point. What is also not shown in this particular slide is, to the north of the cluster development that we're looking at, there's two wetlands, you know, during the process of investigating the site, I'm working with our biologist, two wetlands were, were found in the northern portion of the site. So really, what has led to the site plan we're looking at is, is a number of constraints. Number one, the scenic setback off of Highway 1, that's a 100-foot setback. There's a bluff setback, obviously off of the bluff. You know, we have a, studies that have been done to understand the bluff and erosion and sea change and things of that nature. And what our consultant and engineer has prescribed is a, is a setback that is, that is shown here. I'll also note that we were even more conservative in the placement of the units that are closest to the bluff. We, we placed them, we're proposing them further away from the bluff than hypothetically we would have been able to based upon the, the engineer's report. So the setbacks, the two setbacks, the wetlands to the north, and then obviously, we rely on septic for the site. So there's septic areas throughout the site. We've worked with Adobe Engineering, which I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, to understand the site, place the septic areas, and then work the placement of the development in, in response to those, in, in response to that additional constraint. So access, as you can see, and Margaret will note out, will, will show us, is off of Highway 1, there's a driveway that kind of sweeps down and to the south. Closest to, kind of the light blue dot is a proposed inn and spa. The spa and reception area, so that will obviously be where visitors to the, to this Timber Cove Country Inn would check in. You know, small little seating reception area, and there's also a spa that's proposed here. Is it three or four, Margaret? I think it's four.
Three.
Three rooms, yep, for, for treatment. We have, as Michael noted, 12 units. You'll get a little bit more flavor of these units, what they look like, how they lay out. They're just about 650 square feet. Margaret will show you those in more detail, but those have been situated throughout the site. And really, the goal here is, you'll see in the architecture, you'll see in the placement here, is to have as absolute light a touch as we possibly can, take advantage of the, obviously amazing views out to the bluff and out to the ocean. So windows have been oriented to take advantage of those, take advantage of those views. The site does slope down from Highway 1 down to the bluff. There's also some vegetation along Highway 1 that's a natural screen. So that, the advantage of that is that, you know, as you're driving down Highway 1 and you're, you know, looking off to the coast, it's screen number one, and then there's an elevation change number two, which really helps to limit the impact of these proposed units for people who are, you know, in the area driving by and whatnot. The last thing I'll note is a, is a sauna soaking tub that is proposed towards the southern portion of the site, as Margaret is pointing out. That would consist of a very small soaking tub with a, the thought is that would be somewhere in the range of, you know, call it eight people, maybe right around eight people, it would accommodate relatively small. Really, a connection to the spa functionality up at the reception building. So the thought would be that visitors could come, get a spa treatment, and experience the soaking tub. And obviously, visitors as well could experience that, and then a, a very small sauna building as well to accompany that. There's obviously parking that meets, meets the requirements. We've worked with, with Adobe on parking requirements. And I guess the last thing I'll note is there is a emergency vehicle access that is proposed to go through the parking lot to the south that, that is part of the Timber Cove Resort. And that, you know, we've, again, worked with Adobe to understand emergency vehicle access, and what they've recommended is we provide that access through that parking lot just for ease of use for emergency vehicles. So those are kind of the big picture notes on, on the site plan. Certainly, if anyone has any further questions in the, in the Q and A session, we're happy to answer those, but at this point, I'll hand it over to Margaret, thank you all.
Thank you, Colin. Um. What I'm going to begin to address here is a recognition. What I'm beginning to address here is a recognition that we are in the coastal zone. We're in a very special area. And we recognize that we're putting this, proposing this development on a vacant parcel of coastline. And so in the application, it behooves us to consider what impacts that might have. Those impacts are on what the physical structure, putting physical structures there would do. Would it disturb the soil? Would it disturb native habitat for monarch butterflies? Would it be done, would it be in wetlands? So we have to consider those sorts of things. We have to also consider the impact, not just of once the buildings are built, but also on, we're going to be having more people here. We're going to be attracting more tourists. And so what does that mean to the community at large? It'll mean that there's more people traveling on the road. So what's that impact on greenhouse gases or noise or traffic? So to understand that better and to see how our project does impact in these ways, we worked with a series of experts that assessed the project and in a lot of ways said, hey, no, I don't think you should do it this way. For example, the wetlands were identified and so there is no development done within 100 foot setbacks of those wetlands. So as you'll notice in the application materials, there are technical reports on greenhouse gases, water and septic, air quality, biology, the geotech with the bluff, that sort of And in terms of impact on the community, because it does affect us who live here, I mean, I'm a third of a mile away from this development. I live here and so it does affect us. It is, it will create change. And so I think from that perspective, this is where the community feedback is so valuable to us. And this conversation and continued conversations in terms of feedback is very important to us. We've had conversations with, with the Coastal Commission. We've had conversations with Supervisor Hopkins Group. We've had conversations with the county, just so that we can understand better, how do we make this conform to the regulations that we have? So in looking at, what does this look like, you know? That's one of the exciting things. We wanted to make sure that it looks and feels and matches the environment that we have here. Those of us who live in Timber Cove subdivision know that there are design guidelines. The same applies to any designs within the coastal zone. So this is the style, the inspiration for the imagery and the architectural design that we were thinking about. Clean, using natural materials and making sure that it blends in with the environment. So this is a rendering of one of the 12 cabins. So as Colin said, they're about 650 square feet in size, very simple in design, single story with a sloping roof, redwood exteriors which will age over time. And so looking here, these views are out towards the ocean. This back end of the cabin is where, backs toward Highway One. As I said, the type of materials that we're talking about, natural colors, natural materials, redwood, colors and textures that blend in with the natural environment. We are not talking about a big yellow building that is multi-story, but so that you can see it as soon as you come around the corner. No, this is about blending in with the environment, using the natural terrain for placement, but the colors and the textures as well to blend in with the natural environment that's there. Each of the 12 cabins, we plan to use prefabricated modules. So each cabin will have 12, two modules. One module contains a bathroom and bedroom, and the other contains the living room and a small kitchenette. They all have decks that you can sit outside and enjoy the environment. And there will be one cabin that is ADA accessible and it will have a larger bathroom to allow that accessibility. As you can see, interior design is pretty simple. It's proposed to be pretty simple because as we all know who live here, it's the outside that is important to us. And that's another reason why we want to tread lightly, because that is part of the appeal of those people, everyone who comes here, the outside. So we're letting the outside come into the caverns as much as we can and keep the rest of the design very simple. We're talking clean, natural materials for interior design. These are just ideas, nothing set in place, but this is the sort of style that we're looking at. So amenities, we're talking about the 12 cabins, but in the reception building, this is where we're looking to introduce the spa treatment rooms. Along with the three individual spa treatment rooms, there is a small multifunction room, about 21 by 24 feet square. And so this room can hold a small yoga class, that sort of thing. So it's not just limited to the individual treatments or soaking in the soaking tub or enjoying the sauna, but group, small group activities are possible as well. The spa will be open to the public. So that means that anyone can come, the community, people who are staying in the cabins or from anywhere, they can come and book a treatment here. The sauna and the soaking tub are not available to the public, but they are available to guests of the cabins and to someone who books a spa treatment. So that will be limited in access, but the spa overall will be open to the public. This shows an elevation of the reception building and spa, and this is the plan. So essentially, you're coming in, in here, check into your cabin, get your keys, wander down to your cabin. This is the small multifunction room behind. This is the ante room, so people waiting to go into their, their treatment. And these are the three individual treatment rooms with corresponding locker rooms and bathrooms for those receiving the treatments. We've got a deck out here, small deck out here. This is back storage room and restroom facilities. And this is like trash collection and other utilities. This is the plan for the small sauna and soaking tub. So it will be fenced and we are considering putting a green roof on the sauna. And that is pretty much, I think, all we have to present. It's pretty, like we said, it's pretty quick and top level. And I think now we're open to any questions coming from the, coming from the, from the board. One other thing, what I will do is, at the end of this presentation, at the end of the discussion, this is contact information about the project. So Marina Herrera is the planner assigned to our project. The project number is PLP 20-0025. And anyone, anyone in the general public at all can download the, all the files that are in the application, take your time and have a look at it. This is the link to that. We've had some troubles because the initial application file was so big, especially for us out here on the coast, it's pretty hard to download. So it's been broken down into the individual files, so it should make it easier for you to access. And then lastly, this is my contact information. And so over the next, the coming weeks where we're discussing this, where we're looking for feedback, refining how this works, I am more than happy to meet with anyone who has any questions, who wants to discuss anything about this. Please contact me. I'm happy to answer questions, talk more about it, talk to a group. We'll be presenting to the homeowners, the Timber Cove Home Owners Association next board meeting. Please. We want to work with the community to make this the best possible project for our community here and for everybody. So I'll put that up at the end of the, at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Margaret. I'll just go down our list and invite council members to ask questions or make comments. Marty? Unmute yourself.
You know, I, I spent some time going through the whole application, although I didn't read every single line on the 70-page air quality report. I did go through the whole application and I appreciated the care you've taken in covering everything and in providing, for example, some photographs of the views from various parts of the property in the highway about what it would look like. And it appears to me to be in scale with the site and with the community. And I really didn't have any comments. I'm still taking it all in. Nothing really popped out to me that didn't appear to have been considered in your application and the supporting materials. I'm assuming that all the agencies that are involved, which were listed in the application, will have a go at commenting and they certainly have more expertise than I do about traffic flow and air quality and plants and that kind of thing. So I think it's a lot more attractive than the dirt parking lot that's there now. And I don't have any stellar negative critical comments to make. Thank you.
Margaret or Michael or Colin, did you want to respond to any of that or it's not really a question? Okay. Debbie?
I don't have any negative comments, but I do have a lot of questions. And I think most of them are probably for the county staff, the planning staff. I felt a need for a little more history of the, the Timber Cove Inn and especially some background to the statements in the plans that the inn itself is not allowed to expand. I wondered about the rationale for that. This seems essentially an expansion and I understand it's a separate project with its own ownership organization, but they're very closely linked. And I wondered what the rationale was for not allowing the Timber Cove Inn to do an And they cite the, the LCP and I think the general plan as well. That puzzled me and so it raised a question. That's a question, it's not a complaint. So some history on that would be helpful to me at least.
If I could, if I could try to answer, and we've, we've tried to research that as well, we've asked, you know, for our, for our purposes, obviously for me as the owner of the Timber Cove Hotel as well, to know what that was about. There, there was discussion in the record, from what I understand, that, that at that time, Timber Cove was in disrepair and was also, I guess, involved in violations and wasn't a good member of the community at the time. That's some of the feedback that we had and that it was kind of a reprimand to the owners of Timber Cove at the time, saying, if you're going to do things without the approval of the county, then we're going to put binders around you. So I don't, I can't speak, I mean, this is hearsay, obviously, and we've tried to research it for the exact questions that you're asking, to know what, what the thought was behind that. And that's the best that we had been able to ascertain. Margaret, perhaps you can elaborate, but that was the information that was given to us in a informal manner.
And yeah, Debbie, that is correct. And we did investigate because there were no records in the county. We actually ended up getting access to Coastal Commission files, because it dates back to the 1980 original LCP. And there was a survey done, there was a community survey done. And there was very little response to it, but one person said they didn't believe that the hotel was being managed properly and so didn't deserve to be supported in any expansion. And that is documented in Coastal Commission files.
It just seems that it might have been easier to simply change the LCP since it's going through revision. And how I read it was that you've gone to a lot of trouble to expand the lodge.
There has been no expansion of Timber Cove Resort at all.
Not on that property.
No, that's correct. So, and as Michael said, this is separate ownership because of that and private parcels. So, yeah.
Well, it's sort of separate. No, I, I understand. I, I would do it that way too. We have time limit here, don't we?
Oh, we have. Ask your question and we'll, yeah, 7:30. Let's keep going. Would you like to thank him? We'll come back to you. You raise your hand.
Well, I have a, well, there's, I was intrigued also about the comments about worker housing. And, and again, this leads to a larger problem with the planning documents that cover the coast, the, the LCP and County General Plan, make it very difficult to provide affordable housing of any sort in the coastal zone. And yet they want to encourage visitor, visitor facilities which require workers that need places to live, where the community that needs to provide the wherewithal for these places to function. And I, I was wondering if you could possibly find a way to put worker housing on the site, incorporate it within the plan, maybe an apartment or two. Probably not. You've got it pretty well developed as I see it and within the envelope that you've got to develop. Or make commitments to be sure that you're emphasizing providing employment to local people, so that the housing of employees doesn't become an issue. I think.
If I could, if I could respond.
Bigger issue.
If you'd like me to respond along the way to each of your questions, I'd be happy to. The, the small parcel that I mentioned. The, the small parcel that I mentioned on the, the east side of Highway One, which is the third parcel that, that I purchased at the time, the end of 2014. I, I've said that publicly, and I'll say it again publicly, if I'm given approval to build one, two, or three units, or however many units of worker housing, the, the county thinks suitable for that site, I pledge to build it. I need worker housing like you can't believe. It's difficult to find people to attract them to work in the area where they have to drive 30 minutes, 45 minutes. Often they need their own car. There's, there's no public transportation opportunity. So I've said it publicly and I'll say it again, that on that parcel across the street there, I'd be happy to develop some worker housing, affordable worker, worker housing. So if it wants to somehow make its way into this, this discussion, I'm all ears.
I'd like to just add on to that. There are conditions in, in an application that we have to address workforce housing. And if this was in an urban area, there are specific requirements that you would have to adhere to. They're not in existence for the coastal zone. And what we really wanted to show in this application firstly is this ownership has shown a commitment to staff housing. Michael and his team have bought housing up on the ridge for staff housing. We're in the process of building a house within the Timber Cove subdivision for staff housing. And we rent houses locally. What we're really committed to here is finding an affordable staff housing option that doesn't mean paying credits that are lost in the coffers of rest of, the rest of Sonoma County, here in the coast. And how we can support not just this development or Timber Cove Resort, but also other businesses that need that affordable housing. And so that's why I think it requires an honest, open conversation with the county, rather than just a pat solution.
My other general question, is this a good time to be doing this?
If you had asked me three or four, four or five months ago, I, I would have said yes. You know, it's obviously a, a very disrupted time for the hospitality industry, as you can imagine, but we're long, long-term players. We look far into the future and to answer your question, it's obviously a very difficult time for hotels right now throughout the country and the world. But, you know, we're optimistic that things will return to somewhat normal in, you know, in a year or two. And then life would resume as it was prior to the COVID.
Okay, let's move on. Abby. Gloria, it's yours. You're muted. There you go.
I don't really have any comments, I think. The project managers have already been in contact with the tribe, so I've heard a little bit about it from like our tribal historic preservation officer. So I think we're okay right here for now. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wanda? You're on mute, Wanda. Still on mute?
You can't hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, Scott, am I on?
You are. Please go.
Okay, thank you. Getting a lot of feedback here. Debbie hit on a lot of things that I wanted to say, so thank you, Debbie. That was good. I, I have to say though, well, well, no, I'll skip that part. Something that hasn't been mentioned though is climate change and the effects of that with construction on the coast and wooden structures on the coast at that. You know, it's, it's predicted, I mean, the kind of fire storms we're having now are, you know, paralleled with the kind of atmospheric river storms that we, you know, have in the winter. That won't be every year, because we'll also have drought, which brings up the water issue, which I would like somebody to talk about. But you know, that's, that's a concern. I mean, it's, the coast is changing. And I feel like what the local coastal plan is set up to do is to protect the coast. And to do this kind of construction, new construction on the coast in 2020 seems, I don't know, a little short sighted. If this had been, come up in 1970, everyone would have been like, oh, that's great. But it, it's just the, the time we live in, the world we live in. So talking about climate change, talking about water, if you could address that. And also just one other thing I noticed reading through things, that there was reference made to a takings clause that's in the constitution, which made me have to look it up. And it seems like it's about having compensation if, you know, for a private landowner, if, if, you know, public forces, you know, don't allow, you know, some kind of use for that land. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering if that was stuck in there, you know, in case this application doesn't get approved, if there's some legal recourse that is sort of in, you know, in the back of your minds. I don't know, pursue the county to, I, I just, that, that just stuck out to me. So if you could address those, thank you.
With, with respect to Michael, I think the, the takings discussion is with respect to the expansion item we spoke about earlier. And I think that the premises of it is that not allowing development on, on an adjacent parcel for what seems to be reasons that a lot of us here are not clear on doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So I think our land use attorney made reference to that, that takings clause. I won't speak for Michael, but Michael, I don't think there's any intention of suing the county for, for any particular reason. Michael, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I'm, you, you know, it's, I'll have to get a little bit more info on it, Colin. I I don't have enough info on the, on the clause in there to speak to it at the moment. But I, I think that, yeah, I, I agree with you that, that's what that was about, that it's, it's kind of arbitrary and capricious when you say you didn't like the way a hotel was being managed by the, the, the owners at that time and therefore forevermore, the the property is subject to a, a no build or no expansion or so. It's, it's, it's an odd clause, I'll say so. But yeah, I'll, I'll have to review it more.
Yeah.
I've written it down in my notes.
Yep. And then, you know, with respect to drought, fire, climate change, you know, certainly with respect to the bluff study. Climate change, sea level change is a significant component of that study, and that's fully been contemplated. And, and the gentleman who did the study has been working on this site for a number of years, if not maybe a decade or two. So he has a history with the site. He has data on the site with respect to impacts to the bluff. And his analysis takes into account sea level change. You know, and as engineers, they put factors of safety on and, and, and we even, you know, Michael was pretty adamant that we put another factor of safety on where those, where those cabins were located, far away from the bluff. But that's not the only component that you're speaking about. With respect to fire, you know, certainly that's a, a topic of discussion, you know, that you guys are very familiar with. You know, I think one of the things we've been discussing is construction. You know, I think these would be prefabricated timber structures. The foundation, the type of foundation that we use under these cabins has been a significant topic of discussion. For example, does, do we put these, put the cabins on piers so that, you know, wildlife and vegetation would run below the cabins or do you build kind of solid concrete foundation walls so that, so obviously, you know, vegetation would not be below. We are open, very open to this and fire, fire impacts is a big component of that decision. So we're, you know, we're, we're speaking with our consultants. We're happy to speak with the public, speak with the county and get to the right answer. With respect to drought and water, you know, I think Margaret's pretty familiar with this subject and maybe you want to speak to, you know, our water source, Margaret, for a moment?
Yeah. In Timber Cove, we, water is, is a scarce commodity and an expensive commodity. And we have a state regulated Timber Cove Water District. And I know that it has to report and conform to whatever state regulations there are about being able to provide for demand here in the region. And we have a, we have a will serve letter from the Timber Cove County Water District that, that they can supply water to this development, just like we also have a will serve letter in the application from PG&E to say that they can provide us with electricity, which we hope they're able to do. So yeah, but the question of water and the ability to meet the needs here, yes, it's very important to us here. And we'll, we'll absolutely make sure that the community is not left high and dry because of this development.
Am I still on here?
You are.
But that does mean water being trucked in, I assume?
No, not at all. Not at all.
It's already happened, hasn't it, in Timber Cove?
It, yes, Wanda, it did happen because essentially operationally, we weren't as effective as we could have been. And that, that corresponded with the, the long period of drought that we had. The Water District has managed to operationally get more effective. And in doing that, and as I said, actually responded to reporting requirements to the state that they are actually, they do have the capacity and shown that. And so, yeah, that's where we are with it. It's not about trucking the water in.
Okay. Good, Wanda?
Go ahead.
I'm next on the list.
Yeah, I'm done.
I was asked by our Timber Cove Fire Protection District Chief to, because he couldn't make the meeting, to just mention that they are looking at the fire and access and a lot of the issues around emergency access and are in discussions with and will be reporting to the county as part of this process. Time in that 30-day window. So they are, I have nine items which I won't go over, but that is actively being discussed to treat, address those things. And Margaret, if you could just speak to the cliff bluff trail and also the effects of TOT.
Right. Thank you, Scott. So part, part of being in the coastal zone is the Coastal Commission requires public access where possible to the bluffs. And so currently there is a bluff trail on this private parcel, which we're looking to develop. And so as part of this application, we would be deeding that to be accessible to the public. And that would be just like a state park. It would be open from sunrise to sunset. That and the, the cabins development, it will be able to, will be able to have a buyout for, I think, 24 days a year, so it can be closed to the public for 24 days a year. Part of the application means that even though that's possible, there will be no weddings, there will be no outdoor amplified music, nothing like that. And so, but this bluff trail will be opened up to the public. And I know that was one of Chief Lynn's concerns was about his ability, his and his team's ability to support the public, the additional tourists that are coming here and, and his ability to support the public from emergency response, like down the cliff, that, all of that sort of thing. And we, we discussed the recognition that this, this development would be generating transient occupancy tax, 12% on bed tax, which essentially if it was to get up and going, maybe $200,000, $250,000 a year, which has contributed which goes into the general fund. I think we're in agreement that if at all possible, that if this development is allowed to go ahead and, and have those funds available for TOT, that really we will work hard to get those funds to come back to the community to support initiatives such as the volunteer firefighters responding to the increased tourism and other infrastructure in a way that supports, again, comes back to the coast.
Okay, thank you. Cal? You're muted. Still muted. We had this problem last time.
I can try to unmute Cal. I think I'm the one who flipped that.
Okay, you're on, you're on, Cal.
Thanks, Cal.
My major concern is about level of traffic coming through Jenner and number of people will be stopping in Jenner. We're already almost at full capacity there. What are your traffic parameters you guys are looking at?
So we have a, a traffic consultant, W. Trans, who's done traffic studies and they've done trip generation based upon the number of rooms and the various, you know, considerations of the property. And they've done an initial traffic study. And they've they've determined initially that the site has a, I think, the terminology is less than significant impact on the surrounding roadway. And that's part of our application. And the, the backup and analysis details are contained within their report, which is part of our application. So I don't have all the details at my fingertips now, but to the extent you have questions, you know, either, you know, Margaret, myself, or W. Trans could certainly answer those questions in more detail.
Yeah. Could you still hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Just, just general comment that, you know, we talked about supposed to be Dega Bay and certainly Jenner, we're seeing kind of limits of, of what our capacity is on the coast. And adding more, ultimately, we've got issues here. So that's just my general overriding comment, but, but thank you for the thorough description.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Brooks, you're muted. Are you with, Brooks, if you unmute yourself, if you have some questions? Well, Leo, maybe you can. There you go.
All right, okay. Most of the things that have kind of already been access, which you brought up, Scott, being addressed. I was wondering, where are the access points to the coastal trail? Is that going to create, does that create a parking issue? Are they going to be coming in and parking in your, your driveway for the inn? And then my other concern is about how much parking space you do have. I think you said you had 18 spaces and with 12 cabins and four or five employees on it one time and then some spa guests. Looks to me like parking might be a little tight. And then that again reflects on emergency access. If the emergency teams have to get in there for medical reason or for fire or whatever. So those are kind of my areas of concern.
Yep. So with respect to emergency access, there is a, there is a, I think a K-turn, I think is the terminology, at the end of the, end of the roadway. It's kind of in, in front of the generator utility area. It's kind of just south of the spa reception building. So there's ability for merchant vehicles to do a, a K-turn there. or to continue through the adjacent parking lot and out to the, to Highway One through the adjacent Timber Cove Resort driveway. And again, Adobe Engineering is our site engineer and they've studied this, the site, you know, they've been with us for the last couple of years and they've been studying the site. And so I think we, we feel good about it, but you know, part of the process is certainly speaking with the, the local officials, local emergency vehicles, you know, fire, EMT, et cetera, and making sure that they are comfortable with our proposed plan. With respect to parking, the parking has been considered based upon the proposed development. I think we feel good about the parking capacity that we have. With respect to access to the bluff, there is, is part of some recent work on the neighboring parcel, there is a bench to view the Bufano statue. And in conjunction with that bench is parking capacity. So I think that parking capacity would allow access for them to, to access those parking lots, get out of their vehicle and make their way to the, to the coastal bluff trail.
Anything else, Brooks?
Something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, Kathy, you're, you're on muted, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so one of the things that really stuck out to me glaringly was you keep referring to the water and yet when I look up, the only source of showing that the water will be served, you have this will serve letter. It's undated and it's not signed, that's what's in this document. And I just have issues with that. It, you're talking about using a lot more water. I consulted with Bodega Bay Public Utility District and they're talking about, she said that you would be using 4,000 to 5,000 cubic feet of water for your country inn per month, which is 35,000 to 40,000 gallons. And I know people run out of water up in Timber Cove and that this is an issue that they're concerned about. I also understand that the State Water Quality Control Board checks for your water source capacity. I know they do that here in Salmon Creek, because I'm on the water board here for our small little Salmon Creek water system. And they say basically that you have enough water source capacity for your single-family dwelling homes and parcels that aren't built right now and limited use by Timber Cove Inn or Timber Cove Resort. So I'm concerned about that. An unsigned document, an undated document, I find very concerning. The second issue I have is specific gas and electric. There will, what is it? Their will serve letter, which is two years old, says that we may utilize or extend our electric distribution facilities. A lot has happened in two years with PG&E, including more fires and a bankruptcy. So I believe that should be looked at and updated as well. There are some other things too, but I applaud the rest of my board members. I think they've done well addressing concerns, so that's my concerns.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue with having those letters updated, honestly. I think, I think it's a fair point. You know, we, we happen at this for a couple of years now. I think, you know, Margaret is very familiar with Timber Cove water. You know, I think she would chime in that we could certainly get that letter updated and get some more confidence that they're able to serve us. And I think with the electric service, I, we're more than happy to get updated letters to that, to that extent.
And I, yeah, absolutely. I would like to say that that goes hand in hand with the fires as well. You don't have enough adequate water for fire protection, that's going to be an issue also. So that's it, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, Eric Lynn is bringing up that point as well and engaging that conversation about water for fire protection, fighting fires. Okay, Jay?
Yeah, you know, full disclosure, I worked for Habitat for Humanity for four years in Sonoma County. So I've sat on the other side of this many times, so take everything I say with a grain of salt. But as one of the younger people on the council, I do want to talk about what Timber Cove means for, for my generation and the generations coming up. I've, I've also worked with Timber Cove for 13 years now in social services in West County. And I manage an environmental organization, so I do want to comment on some of the environmental issues that I see. You know, growing up in this community, all of my friends that were, you know, all of the people in my year from Emelino High School that lived in Port Ross and Timber Cove, worked at Timber Cove except for one. All of those individuals do not live in the county anymore except for two and they currently work at Timber Cove. So as far as a resource is concerned for our community and for our young people to live and work where they were born and raised, I, I really do think that we need to look at responsible, conservationist ways to expand, at least in a very conservative way, some, some ability for, for our young people to stay and have some jobs in this community. I've also worked in vocational rehab for many years and Timber has always been a place for people with barriers to employment to be hired in this community. And I see this as another way to, to help some of our folks. I have one gentleman, then I got a job and I worked at West County Community Services 11 years ago. And the staff at Timber come together to give him transportation and he has some pretty serious barriers and he continues to work and contribute to the community and to the family that's helping to support him. So I, I am, am actually very in favor of expanding and bringing in more jobs into this community. I know that often that can butt directly with environmentalism. Full disclosure, I run an environmental organization. My biologist, my staff biologist has done a historical biological assessment on this property, is very familiar with it. And looking at some of the issues there, I, we personally don't see those wetlands as pretty viable wetlands. I think her direct quote was, they're pretty dry wetlands if they are. Apparently that, that assessment was made during our floods several years ago. I do disagree with the, the nesting birds assessment in the plan and maybe you guys can speak to that. We do believe that there are, there is habitat for nesting birds where that ground is going to be broken. However, it does look like you're going to have some folks that are going to, some biologists that are going to come through beforehand. But I do want to make sure that breaking ground is going to happen when nesting bird season isn't present. And then one other question I had is there's been a lot of talk about the view from Highway One. I know these are pretty low profile, you know, rooms and cabins. However, as somebody that often is, you know, fishing out on the coast in that area and looking back, is that, you know, that profile is going to be wrapped in with the inn itself? So it's not really going to be something that's going to be sticking out to the side? And those are my questions and my comments for this proposal.
Yep, so appreciate, appreciate the input on, on, you know, your history in the, in the community and the job creation. And I think that's, you know, something that we, we feel is obviously a very strong component of, of the application overall. The nesting birds, you're, you're, you're right on there. Your, our biologists are fully aware of that particular issue. It is something Margaret and Michael and I are focused on. And I think it's, it's a good note, I've marked it here and it's something that will, you know, make sure that with respect to the nesting birds, that we're being sensitive there when, when we are breaking ground. In terms of the visibility, so I think your question was the view from, from the ocean and what that impact would be. As part of our visual assessment, we do have views, a number of views, one of them actually is from, from the ocean. And Margaret did a lot of geometry, I'll say, in understanding, you know, you know, obviously when you're right against the cliff, if you happen to be kayaking, you know, within, I don't have that exhibit right in front of me, maybe it's within 100 feet or so, maybe 150 feet of, of the, of the bluff, you're not going to be able to view the development just because the bluff is going to be impeded in there. Somewhere between maybe 200 and maybe 500 feet, you could, you could see the development. But as you noted, it's a very low slung development. The materiality of, of the building components really have been chosen to absolutely blend in with the, you know, with the surrounding landscape. That's, that's the goal here. And these things don't pop up above the ridge, for example, I think they would always blend in with the habitat that's directly behind it. And as we looked a lot at, you know, visual dominance and some of these different terminology that you have to look at when you're doing your visual assessment, we think that the proposed development is much more muted than, we think Timber Cove is beautiful and blends in. And I think this is even more, it's even a smaller scale and even blends in further than the adjacent Timber Cove Resort. So we, we feel good about it in terms of the placement of the structures. We have a landscape architect on board that, that is, you know, proposed certain vegetation is screened in. All of that screening would be native habitat, you know, we have no interest in bringing in habitat that's not native. We, I think it goes without saying that everyone who's ever been on the site understands that the, the best part about it is the site and the, and the landscape and the views. So everything we're doing is to, is to minimize impact and have an incredibly light touch. But if there's screen needed, it would be, you know, native material, things of that nature.
Yeah, so I just want to finish with, to the other members of the council that, you know, I, I see this as a friendly development for our community, to people that are, work with our community. And I think it could be a really positive thing for the generations to come after.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna allow time at the very end for council members to wrap up as time allows. So moving on, we'll have public questions and Q and A and comments now. So please say your name and affiliation, if there is any, and Leo, please.
Sure, Anne, I have been here even though my internet's been flickering and Elise is, I'm gonna keep an eye on it if I drop out. So right now there's four hands raised as well as six comments in the formal Q and A. Shall we go through the people who are waiting with their hands raised first?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Anne Vernon's first, she's been waiting for a while, I'm gonna go ahead and allow her to talk. Anne, you are able to talk.
Minutes.
Okay, yes, I'm the direct neighbor to the inn. And we did meet with Margaret. We were not made aware that there was a permit being pulled on the property right next to us for more than one unit. It's zoned for one unit, the inn has their water tanks on our property. We've talked to our neighbors around, this would impact four households around the inn. And this subdivision, subdivision two is zoned one house per lot. I don't think having a three-unit building there would be a good entry into Timber Cove subdivision as a whole. I do believe that there should be affordable housing. But I don't think we should have to take the hit in a rural area to have a multiple unit house there, nor do I think it's a good look for the entryway into Timber Cove. I'm a little surprised we weren't told about the permit. Also, John Ray is on the water board and there is some concern, I'll let him talk about this, as to this being a different entity that we don't have a contract with water-wise. So there are some things here we're surprised at, because we thought it was a little bit more open. You may not know our history with past owners, Dr. Jason Liu, our property was bulldozed without our permission by the inn. And so we are a little leery. There's been some things that we had verbal contracts in the past with the inn that did not get fulfilled. So we really need a very transparent process going on here. And I think that the inn should basically buy lots, they're very inexpensive in Timber Cove. And they should build single house, houses on them for their employees or come up with some other solution than taking the direct neighbors to lose property values by building a multiple unit there.
So, yeah, I think, as I understand it, Margaret and Michael, I think what the reference is to Michael's earlier comments about the potential for workforce housing across the street. I think that is a concept that is discussed. We certainly haven't pulled a permit on that. We certainly, if that were a real proposal, that would be part of a public process similar to what we're currently going through here. And there would be an opportunity for, for the public to, to weigh in and certainly the neighbors. So I think workforce housing is a challenge and I think everyone understands that. How do you address that challenge? I don't think there's any one answer that's been, been determined. But I think what Michael was expressing is that he understands the challenges, the challenges of him and he, and he's open to, open to ideas, yeah.
Yeah, and we, we have no permit pulled, this is just, you know, discussions that workforce housing is, you know, a very necessary component of Timber Cove. Certainly we understand your concerns and to your point, I did purchase a lot up in Timber Cove and, and in the process of building a home there. And I would like to do that with more lots as well, just as you've suggested. It, it's obviously a lengthy process to do any development up in the Timber Cove neighborhood. So, you know, what, what I assumed would be a few months worth of engineering is a year and a half of review and everything else. So it's, it's not an easy process, unfortunately. But I understand your concerns and it's a balance. And, you know, some folks feel that having some affordable workforce housing in the area is a benefit to the larger community. Others obviously feel that, you know, it can be a detriment depending on how it's, it's done. I can certainly say that if, if we were to develop any workforce housing, it would be done in an extremely aesthetic and pleasing manner. It would not be something that would devalue property values, but, you know, I understand the concern. We are happy to have a dialogue about it though, obviously. You know, and, and nothing has been pulled or submitted without, without discussions with the neighbor, the neighborhood.
Thank you, Michael, this is John Ray. In regards to the water and the Water District committing to serving you with water. We have no document like that, that I know of, for your new facility. We have one for the old facility and at that time when that was discussed, there was a promise from a previous owner to build us a water tank and try to help the water system. That never happened. And here we are today, looking at all these new projects. I'd want to cooperate with you folks, both Anne and I do. We are for growth, growth is, the population of the earth is getting bigger. But I think we have to have a serious discussion around water. This may trigger all kinds of things about the Water District and the water we have available to build out. And I think that the build out people have priority over the inn, both in your new construction and even the inn itself, because it appears that document wasn't signed. So we should have a long discussion about this. You need to help us so you can go forward. Thank you.
It's more of a statement, is, you want to comment at all?
I, I can, I can respond just briefly in as much as, when we were exploring this process, I did contact the Timber Cove Water District. I was provided with a will serve letter, I have to double check and I was provided with a will serve letter. I have to double check and see uh, if it wasn't dated, if it wasn't signed. I do have um, a record of conversation about this and um, and at the same time, absolutely, if um, if there is a concern about the Water District to be able to um, have the capacity to meet the needs of this development, that is most important, that we, we get to the bottom of that.
Right. Scott, um, just, um, I, I know that Permit Sonoma's not here, but I did have just a little bit of emailing beforehand, so I thought I could just provide some information from Cecily about the timeline, um, because it came up in the email that she provided to me. So she said you're referring to PLP 20 dash 0025, a recent planning application for cottages and spa. This application was submitted July 16th, 2020, and has since been assigned to Marina Herrera, a planner at Permit Sonoma. At this time, no building permits have been filed for PLP 20 dash 0025. The referral sent to other agencies to determine if the project is complete to begin processing can be found here. And there's a link that was um, provided to our office to Elise that I believe is the same link that Margaret posted. Um, since this project is still very new, there are limited records, but Marina copied here may have something to add. Um, so I, I just wanted to confirm some of that timeline information, because I know Anne was asking that um, in, in multiple places. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there another hand raised?
Yes, there's three other hands raised. Um, next is Rick Coats. Rick, you should be able to speak now.
Thank you. I, I have five questions, and I, with the limited time, I'm just gonna throw them out there uh, and let people see if they can address all five. The first is, on the traffic study, uh, did that use vehicle miles traveled or did it use a level of service? Uh, second question, with the water issues, have they considered rainwater harvesting, particularly for um, additional water for fire protection and perhaps landscaping? Um, third question, uh, I got in a little late, so I didn't hear whether or not there is any tree removal involved in this. Uh, and then fourth question, power lines. Uh, I'm not sure whether the coastal plan allows for overhead power lines, but I suspect it does. I consider them an attack on the tourist industry and on the beauty of the area, not to mention the safety, fire safety, considering um, PG&E's record on that score. So I would want to know if those power lines will be underground. Uh, and finally, cumulative impacts. Uh, it seems to me that the coast may well die of a thousand small cuts rather than o- one large development. Um, somebody needs to look at the big picture, I think. That's my questions.
Sorry, Ken, um, thanks for those questions. I'll, I'll try to answer those quickly. With respect to um, the traffic study, um, I, I took, I'm keeping a peek at the traffic study now. Um, I believe the primary um, methodology was um, the trip generation in, in uh, the fact that that is below a certain threshold and deemed to be less than significant. Uh, we uh, um, the, the
That sounds like level of service to me, not VMT.
Well, level of service, there, there is, I'm not sure there's any um, intersections. So yes, I think you're right. Level of service, absolutely correct. With respect to vehicle miles traveled, that was a component of our greenhouse gas analysis. So that's been a, a significant um, point of discussion amongst W Trans, uh, ESA, who did our greenhouse gas emissions, but I think that was for the purpose of um, greenhouse gas emissions, the VMT component. Uh, the second question, rainwater harvesting, um, has, has been something um, that has been mentioned. Um, and I think uh, we'll take note of that and take a look at it uh, to see if there's any uh, potential there. Uh, tree removal, um, tree removal is limited. Um, there's limited um, large trees um, that, that would be impacted. I think there's no, I think we determined, we had a derby, do a survey of trees, uh, and any trees that would be removed are um, are quite small. Um, so there's no large trees being removed. Uh, power lines, uh, we would not be putting any um, power lines um, above ground as part of this uh, development. Uh, our initial investigation um, with utilities have been that the uh, the power would be run underground. Um, and with respect to the last point, which is number five, I don't, I don't think there's any um, specific response to that particular question that I could uh, provide.
It, it will have to come up in an EIR, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Cumulative, well.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, Leo.
Thank you. Um, so next, we have um, Steve Bertelbo. Um, Steve, you should be allowed to speak.
Yeah, you see their face.
Steve, you, uh, you're muted, Steve. Okay, go ahead. Floor is yours, Steve. Oh, you're muted again.
Unmuted.
Unmuted. Can you do that, Leo?
Um, yeah, I mean, he was shown as unmuted previously.
He may have, you're working against each other.
No, I wasn't clicking. Steve, you were, you were previously unmuted. Um, I don't know if you had your audio set up so that it's connected. Um, right now, I'm trying to unmute you, so let me see if I can do that on your behalf.
Okay, Steve.
Steve, you're showing as unmuted. Can you try speaking? Do you have your audio connected? I sometimes have that problem where the mic isn't set up.
Shall we come back to Steve?
Yeah, um, Steve, we can't hear you, so if, if you'd like to type your question into the Q and A, um, we can, I guess prioritize that. Um, otherwise, um, you can try to see if you can turn on your microphone functionality. Um, I guess one last thing before we leave. You can try pressing star six and see if you have, um, if that makes any difference. Now, oh, no, that wouldn't matter. He's not on a phone line. Okay, um, we're gonna move to the next person's. Um, it's Richard Satchin Jr.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. That's Richard. Is that right?
All right, oh, thank you. Um, I'm Richard Satchin Jr. Um, and I am with the Sierra Club Sonoma Group. I'm chairman and of the executive committee, and so um, I've been listening in. And um, have a few questions on the project. A lot of issues has already been brought up, so I won't waste time with that. Um, one of my questions was, will this um, project be LEED certified, and if so, to what level, and if not, why not? The other questions I had were regard to um, how long they expect um, before there may be remediation on the cliff, so you know, how many years do, do the engineers expect that, those cliffs to last before they get worn away? And um, I'm kind of concerned about the um, pool and sauna down at the base of the cliff and how that will interact with um, people using coastal access during the day. I just want to see your thoughts on that.
Uh, with respect to LEED certification, we are not proposing LEED certification here. Um, uh, in, in the reason uh, why we're not is, I think it's just a decision we made, and we think that um, the, the components, underlying components of the project are really attractive and, and don't warrant the need for the uh, the LEED stamp, although we think LEED is great in general. Um, timing for the remediation for the bluff study. I'd have to refer to the report exactly. I think it's, I, I think the, the outlook is uh, either 50 or 100 years. I would have to check back to the report, um, but the, the full analysis is contained within the report. Um, and if you have any trouble finding that, we'd be happy to, to go through that with you.
Okay, thank you.
The last question, I'm sorry, um.
Um, just kind of um, how the, you know, the private little pool and uh, sauna will interact with, you know, people using coastal access in the bluff. Um, I'm just, or people paddling around on, on kayaks, et cetera. Um, I'm just not sure, from what I've seen, how visual that is, and will they be disturbing each other?
Yeah, so.
I, I was gonna say, the, the sauna and the pool are, are still up on the top of the bluff. I don't know whether it, it looks as if they're down lower, closer to sea level, but they're up at the same elevation as the, the main uh, development up top.
Oh, okay. Yep, absolutely, yeah.
All right, yeah, in one picture, it looked like it was down low. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next, we have Grace O'Malley. Grace. Um, so Grace, I'm getting a weird message about your older version of Zoom. I can temporarily promote you to a panelist so that you can ask questions. I guess if you have video, you may show up.
Okay.
Grace, was that successful? Are you with us here?
She's not on the screen. Oh, here she is.
Okay, Grace, it looks like you're on our screen and you're unmuted. Will you try speaking?
Nothing.
Grace, will you try one more time? I know with West County, people's internet sometimes comes in and out. I've been struggling too. Um, Grace, I'll make the same suggestion, that you go ahead and um, type your question into the chat, um, and and, and we can try to address it there. Um, Scott, do you want to have me read through the open questions on the Q and A?
Yeah, and then that gives people to type, Steve and Grace both.
Okay, so I'm, I suggest, I'll just go ahead and read through all of the questions at once, and then if you want me to come back to them, um, because some of them are more comments. Um, so the first one from Rue, um, is passing along a question sent to her. Quote, "The primary septic appears to be uphill from the buildings, so does that mean pump septic? And if that's the case, what is the provision for keeping the septic pumps operating during our many power failures?" Um, the next question from Annie Cresswell, "Are you sure these limits don't have to do with the water supply for the area? Timber Cove Water is one source in the subdivision, hasn't been built out yet during, um, and during droughts, this is a water scarce area." Um, Ruben Vinesvig is asking, "What is the purpose of the 24-day closure of the bluff trail?" And a related question from him, "What sort of events are planned?" Um, Janet Smith Heimer said, "I'm a resident of Timber Cove. I'm concerned about the water service. TCCWD is already stressed both physically and financially. Most public water districts have an actual water permit process, so an unsigned, undated letter is insufficient, this poses a risk to the developer too." Um, Ruben is frustrated with the technology that we have here, and Margie Johnson says, "Thank you, council, for having this process. I'm surprised that notification of this meeting, at least for the greater community, was Monday, three days ago." Um, so I don't know if anyone wants to give additional context for kind of the, the meeting and um, kind of the proactive work behind having this at this time.
I'll say to Margie, um, because of the two-part um, system now for uh, uh, introduction to the permit process, uh, we thought we were um, bound by an August 6th deadline, which is the deadline of the first phase, and uh, over the weekend, uh, we found this and we got it posted to the CHCP bulletin um, as soon as we could, and um, we acted quickly, believing we needed to. We actually will have a more, we have more time rather than council and reschedule, we go forward because the base, basic
And, and I can speak to a couple of the other questions, specific to the septic. Um, the septic tanks do have capacity to get through any power outages. It's, it's part of, part of the, the analysis done by uh, Adobe Associates um, is to provide a system that is not, you know, that, that has flexibility, that has capacity, um, and, and will not be overwhelmed in the event of a, of a power outage. Um, with respect to the water service, I think we've addressed that um, point before. We are more than happy to um, you know, re- re- engage the Timber Cove Water District uh, and have those discussions um, and get a, uh, get an updated letter for everyone to give, uh, everyone comfort there.
Anne, Anne, can I just respond to the question about events? Uh, let me uh, restate, there will be no special events held at this facility. Uh, there will be no weddings, there will be no outdoor uh, amplified music at all.
And this, Margaret, the question of why, why 24 up uh, days for closing the coast bluff?
Uh, because there will be times when there might be um, a group that comes in that might want to have the privacy of the entire uh, 12 cabins to themselves. Um, it may not, it may be a wedding, it may not. Uh, there's limited capacity. As I said, there will be no weddings. Um, and so, for that reason, and that, for that reason, the bluff trail, we're requesting that as part of making the bluff trail available to the public, that it is uh, closed to the public for 24 days. That seemed a reasonable sort of um, give and take compromise.
So when you have a, for example, a full buyout, um, you may provide them that extra privacy by closing it that one or two days, and then that would come out of the total for the year?
Correct.
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Scott, we have Steve, who's tried um, phoning in now. Can, um, can we take his question, seeing if it works via phone?
Yes, please.
Steve, will you try speaking?
Yes, this is Dave Bertelbo. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Um, my question relates to the uh, problem of uh, very busy weekends uh, when Highway 101 uh, becomes quite congested. Um, and uh, I noticed that in your uh, uh, completion of the RCPA questionnaire, uh, you did not uh, make any arrangements for car sharing uh, or shuttle arrangements, as those might happen over those kinds of times. Um, as the local coastal plan comes up for review, uh, we are suggesting that uh, Sonoma County consider the same kind of approach that's being used in Marin County now on busy days, uh, when uh, parking permits are required at Muir Woods and people ride the shuttle into the area. Um, and I'm wondering how uh, the inn would operate if that became uh, the uh, the rule on busy weekends.
I, I'll just note that um, this project is expected to produce fewer than 10 new trips per peak hour. So that's not 10 trips per hour. It's that the peak hour uh, that's expected is fewer than 10 trips per hour, and that's been deemed to be less than significant by um, you know, the agencies that um, that handle these types of uh, uh, problems. So, you know, the, the, the project is modest in scale. Uh, the, the traffic um, analysis uh, has deemed the project not to have a, a big demand of trips. Um, so I think our perspective is that uh, a shuttle service, uh, something like that would not be appropriate for this proposed development.
Um, Steve, I would like to also uh, comment on the question around car sharing and shuttle services, especially um, it's considered, especially in terms of employee um, road trips, so travel. And the reality is, living out here um, with different schedules and the distances that we travel, shuttle services and carpooling is not really an option for uh, employees. We have one bus that goes along the coast into Santa Rosa in the morning and comes back at night. And so, um, it, it would, it wouldn't have been realistic for us to give that as an option when we know that the, the when we know that the, the culture here would not support it. In terms of, if the great, if the broader community of the west coast, um, went down the avenue, such as with Muir Woods, in terms of, of closing off access, uh, to vehicles, then that's a big conversation that we have with the greater community, the coastal community, the county, state parks, all of that sort of thing. And so, uh, we would work with the community on that.
I appreciate that and understand it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Grace, are you able to chime in?
No, Grace wrote in the chat that she, um, even though she upgraded, that she wasn't able to, to access it. And, um, actually moving her onto the panelist screen just made her lose all connection. So, um, she declined to write a question. So Scott, where you are right now is, um, well Grace is raising her hand again. Let's give her one more try and let's see if that works. Um, she must have dialed back in, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. And then, um, Rick Coats has his hand up again as well, so you can determine. Normally, we don't let people go twice, but I'm gonna try to do Grace right now.
Hey Grace, you're muted. Okay, you're, you're good.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, beautiful.
Okay, sorry about the glitch. Um, I very much, uh, appreciate this opportunity to learn more about the project. Margaret's been very good, uh, bringing us into the loop, uh, some months ago and giving us a heads up that things were going on. And, um, I guess to explain, uh, my husband and I have lived here for 18 years full-time. We live one mile north of the inn. And, um, over the last 18 years, we've seen substantial changes. Uh, when we first moved here, the inn was, uh, hardly used at all. And over, over time, uh, more and more people are starting to find our community and especially with the new owners and the, um, investment by the current owners. The resort has had outstanding success. And, um, I really, uh, took some time to look at the visual assessment, read a lot of the documents. I appreciate the desire to tread lightly. I like the design very much. I think the simple style and the extended eaves go with the overall Timber Cove look. I think they went out of their way, the project planners, to minimize the visual impacts to Highway 1. I think my biggest concern is that in doing so, um, the cabins and the overall development has been pushed very close to the edge of the bluff. And this maximizes the visual impacts to the neighbors. And I guess, um, I'd like to talk more in detail with the project planners about that. But the existing resort creates a very large degree of nightlights. And I realized through the project documents that, um, the country inn is going to try and, uh, use the dark sky approach. And I, I really think that the, the new little sister could really teach the big sister a lot about lighting. And I, I think that we need to make sure that both properties, uh, appreciate and embrace our dark sky needs. So that's about it, I think I've been cut off.
We still hear you, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any, um, you want to say anything to that, it's more.
Uh, I'll just, I'll just say that, uh, the, the dark sky comment certainly resonates with us and it is one of our focuses, uh, to make certain that it's very low lighting and, uh, not, um, a negative impact to the, uh, the overall atmosphere.
Okay, thank you. Leo, uh, do we have?
So you just, you have Rick Coats who spoke once before and, um, you now have six new comments in the Q and A. So I don't know if you want me to do these and cut those off or if they're too late.
Comments, um, uh, do they need response?
Um, I mean, I think a lot of it's been addressed, a lot of them are comments. But why don't you just, why don't I take the two minutes and just read them so that?
Yeah.
So Timothy Mc, Timothy H. McCusick has two questions. The first is, "What size water meter is slated for the project? When was the will serve letter issued by the TCCWD?" And then his second question is the inn was, or comment was, "The inn was not allowed to expand due to the lack of water." Rue had, um, follow-up about septic. The question about septic wasn't capacity, it was if there would need to be pumping to send F1 uphill from the cabins to the septic location. Um, Annie Cresswell has a comment, "If it is a public trail, it shouldn't be closed at all. How are you going to notify the public in advance of closure dates?" Ruben Winesvig has a comment about, um, we have had this kind of provision with the wine industry. They have had a kind of quote, "Event creep." The ambiguity of the 24-day request is very problematic. And, uh, Ruben also said, "In your response, you mentioned weddings. See what I meant by event creep?" Oh, I've hit my two minutes. Um, and then Grace said, "I request that the existing parking lot be screened. I request that we see a lighting study." And that clears the questions, if you'd like to answer any of them.
Well, with respect to the septic, um, uh, so I think that's certainly something we can review with Adobe. No one has any interest in having a power outage put in our septic capacity out of, uh, uh, you know, our ability, put us out of business, so we'll, we'll review that with Adobe. With respect to water, you know, I don't think we want to belabor the point, but I think Margaret did a lot of investigation into, into why these, um, the inn couldn't expand. Uh, she found reference to, uh, that Q and A that was done a number of years ago. Uh, if there's different documentation, um, you know, certainly all ears. The other question was, um.
October of 18, October of 18 is when the will serve letter was issued to me from Chippico.
Yeah, October of 18, okay.
And Annie had the comment about why close the trail at all.
You know, I, I could be mistaken here and Margaret, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think this is, uh, today a public trail. Uh, we are proposing to make it a public trail as part of this proposed development. And I think, uh, we believe this is a net positive for the public, quite honestly. Um, and I think, uh, you know, holistically, we, we feel very good about this project, how it was planned, how we're gonna build it, um, given public access to the trail, um, with, um, a small number of days set aside, um, for buyouts. And, um, you know, that's something that we're committed to and, and I would certainly honor, um, to the extent it was, um, put into place. Not, not allowing those 24 days to creep, for example.
All right, and Tim, uh, the other part of his question is about the size of the water meter.
I, I don't, yeah, I don't have that answer.
Okay.
Okay. How are we, Leo?
I think you've, um, yeah, I mean, questions continue to drift in, um, and then you have Rick still waiting, but no others.
Why don't we give Rick a, a moment quickly and then we'll wrap it up.
Rick, you're ready to go.
Okay, um, I just wanna note that, uh, in terms of power outages, uh, on the coast out here, uh, they can last not just hours, not just days, but weeks at a time. I think that needs to be taken into account. We seem to be low man on the totem pole when it comes to, uh, PG&E's concern about restoring power. Secondly, uh, you've admitted that there will be a small increase in vehicle miles traveled. And that sort of speaks to the, my, my concern about cumulative impacts is that, uh, the traffic already is almost intolerable on the coast on a holiday weekend. It certainly detracts from any enjoyment and certainly from safety. It got there incrementally, little at a time, uh, because more and more things were approved that caused more and more traffic, so just those comments, thank you.
Can I, can I just respond to that, Rick? Um, the, I know that the, um, the technical report on vehicle miles traveled and the traffic analysis is, was very complicated and we had a lot of conversations about it. I am more than happy to meet with you, uh, mask to mask, and we can go over that report and discuss it and, and so that we can both be on the same page and understand it better.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, last call, Leo.
I mean.
We're good.
I mean, Grace O'Malley also asked, "When will the story polls go up?"
I can answer that, um, because I was asking, uh, PRMD the exact same question. And, um, so when this application is deemed complete by the county, that we have all the correct documents in and things like that, that is when the four-week review period happens. And it will be during, be during that four-week review period that the story polls will, will go up so that all the interested agencies, neighbors, everyone can come and have a look at it. And again, please let me reiterate, I'm more than happy, once those story polls are up, to, um, walk the site with anyone who's interested and have, and have a talk about it. And, uh, especially for our neighbors here, uh, to, to talk about how, how it looks from their properties. So, yeah.
Okay. And, go ahead.
I recommend just, um, everyone who, if you felt like your question wasn't fully answered or if you were late, um, asking those questions, go ahead and contact Margaret and I think she would be willing to help you. Um, and, um, going forward, there's still plenty of process. Go ahead, Scott, I think you're.
Right.
But, um, the, the Zoom won't cut you off or anything, but just be aware that it is 7:30.
Okay, yeah, we, um, I, I did wanna give council members a chance to sort of wrap up. Time is short, um, so if, if I still extend that opportunity. Anyone raise their hand? Uh, Dibby, you're, you need to mute yourself. You're not muted, Dibby.
Dibby, I'm, I'll do it for you, hold on. All right, maybe we're fighting, Dibby, I'll let you do it.
There.
Yeah, you're good.
I think there may be some reason to relook at the setback from the bluff, uh, both visual and safety. As, as I've listened to the comments, I hear some sense that maybe the, taking the, reducing the setback from the, um, the wetland areas, which aren't very lovely wetlands, might be more practical than trying to reduce the 100-foot setback from the bluff. And I think the taking issue must have come about as a result of the fact that if you took all the setbacks seriously, there's nothing left. I, I think it must be related to those setback requirements.
I, I, we, we'll check on this, as Michael noted, we, we all have notes on this. I'm, um, fairly confident that the taking is, uh, with respect to the expansion issue, um, that has been mentioned a couple of times.
But you, you certainly have got another case.
Well, I, I think after a lot of study and investigation and working with all our consultants, you know, the site plan we, we currently have does, um, meet the requirements. Um, and we feel good about it. Um, with respect to reducing the, the setback from, from the wetland, um, I, I'd be, um, I guess I'd be hesitant to believe that would be something that would be achievable, um, based upon what we know now.
It may not. I was very concerned about the geologic report, uh, especially the stability of the site. It requires a lot of money to do that right.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other council members have a wrap-up comment? Seeing none, um, I don't see Cal and Wanda, but.
If, if you can indulge me, I realized I forgot to say that, um, that Supervisor Hopkins, that Linda did wanna be here and we, um, booked her for, uh, being a panelist on a sheriff reform panel. So I, I, she sends her regards, but she did wanna join this because I recognize, Scott, that this is your first, um, land use-related meeting. So I, thank you very much and just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. Um, so in our, um, rules for this type of meeting, we have the option of voting as a council or not. We can choose to just let it be as it is. Or, uh, if council so moves in seconds, we can vote. So, um, I, I leave that out there. So Marty, you're muted, unmuted, you need to unmute. Did you wanna say something? I can't hear you, need to unmute Marty. Okay.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was trying. If I understood correctly, Scott, um, this process is going to involve, the, uh, people putting the project forward, going back and working on a lot of things and working with the permits and OMA people. And then there will be another public comment period, is that the case?
Uh, yes, that's as I understand it. But the MAC is not necessarily gonna have another one of these for this project.
Why? If, if the project changes during this period, I would think that the MAC would want to facilitate public comment again.
Uh, well, that would be a decision of the ad hoc group.
And, you know, we, we would leave this meeting tonight not knowing if this project is going to have water or not, which, uh, seems like a pretty big deal.
Well, why don't we do this, um, we, um, not vote on it? And when the, it comes around again, we can look at the changes and if the ad hoc group feels that things have changed enough to do this again, we could choose to do that. Does that sit well with the applicants as well?
I, I think I personally would say that, um, the resolution of the issue of whether or not we are gonna have water, uh, for this project would affect my vote. And, uh, I would, uh, uh, ask the ad hoc group to bring it back to the MAC at that time. This is a big deal. When, when the MAC was formed and I saw in the bylaws that we were gonna have responsibility for leading a community effort about development along the coast, quite frankly, I thought there wasn't gonna be any ever. So, uh, this is an important project.
And, um, wouldn't the resolution of the water be sort of a, a matter of studies and matter of fact? I'm not opposed to bringing it back, but Jay?
Yeah, I mean, what, what I basically see this body is doing is identifying projects, seeing if they are the culturally and socially appropriate effects for our communities, voting to advance them and then leaving those more specific pieces like water or the scientific side of things to the professionals at permits and OMA.
And Dibby?
I think that person, purpose of this phase is to determine whether the application is complete or not. And I would be comfortable saying the application seems complete if they can resolve the water issue.
And fire. Yeah, so, um, is it, is it fair to, do people wanna vote on this or wait, uh, if we bring it back? Since, um, uh, Marty feels that we're, this, we can't vote on it now, there's too many outstanding things to be worked out. On the other hand, the things to be worked out are more, as Jay says, for the experts. Marty?
Well, I, I think I'll edit my comment to say that we're feeling our way here because this is the first one that we've, um, had, uh, to review. And I hear what Jay is saying and that's a valid viewpoint. And, uh, I guess I have a different perception of the role of the MAC and I'll go back and look at the bylaws. But.
We could also make this an agenda item at a general meeting and not spend an entire evening on one topic.
Right.
We wanted to have it, uh, touch base with it at a general meeting. That might be the best way to approach it and we'll evaluate it at the time that it becomes, uh, comes back. That might be the best way to approach it and we'll evaluate it at the time that it becomes, comes back.
Oh, that would be good.
Okay.
And I think, you know, it's, it should be clear to everybody that in general, I'm very favorable about this project. I think it would be good for the community. I was surprised at the water issue having come up.
Scott, Cal did want to speak, so I unmuted him as well.
Please, Cal.
Hi, yes, Scott. I'm not comfortable in voting up or down on this right now. I'm, I'm gonna listen, gathering evidence and then we'll have it for an agenda item on a later meeting as things begin to, you know, settle out. That's my thought.
Okay. So I'll, I'll move that we not vote on it now and that we keep our eye on it. And with the objective of bringing it to an agenda, a general meeting at an appropriate time, perhaps our next meeting might fit the window for comment. Meanwhile, we will send the, the comments of this meeting to Permit Sonoma. And they'll have the benefit of everybody's feedback and replies. So that's the motion. Any second? Second? And those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Cal and Wanda?
Yeah.
Aye.
All right, and opposed? One, ten? And I, and? None. Okay, so we'll, we'll do just that. It passes. So I was going to call for agenda items, but rather than given the time we have, please, if anybody in the public or on the council has any contributions to our list of agenda items for the future, send them to farmer.cmac@mcn.org, Mendocino Community Network.org. And we will add it for consideration. So I'm, time to adjourn.
Thanks, Scott.
Good move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Thank you.
Margaret for, for taking the time with us and sharing this. I, I sincerely hope that this process develops into a really healthy community process so that we can all enhance our community in a, in a partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks to the audience.
Bye.
Community, it's weird to say audience, but that's the format.
Great job, Scott. Wonderful presentation.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank, thanks to everybody. Bye bye.